...meeting for Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, and this is being done via Zoom teleconference. And some of our members calling into the meeting. Since Carl has a flag in his office, I don't know if you can all say the pledge. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I would say here, America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
That was the weirdest pledge we'd ever have, huh?
No kidding. Setting a new standard.
First of all, just thank you to everyone for coming onto the meeting like this. We all know it's kind of a unique situation, but thank you all for getting involved. Is there any visitors that are on this panel that would like to be recognized at this time? Okay, so we can move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the March 18th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Dennis here, I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion on any of those?
Now. Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Number four, which is the appointments and resignations at this, for this meeting, we don't have either of those, so we can move on to the next two items, which are the ordinances that we're going to be putting into place. So the Liberty Green Historic District Revised Ordinance. First, first of all, did everybody receive these, get a copy of these, and then review them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, on this one, there was, I guess, a revision, Mary, for one of the sections?
Yeah, the first section for the term.
Okay, so everybody got that revision?
No, they did not get that.
Okay.
The term should be four years.
Okay, that's on the historic, on the, we're on the historic district?
Could you repeat that?
The charter, in the section 7-7 of the charter, describes the Historic District Commission as a four-year term. The ordinance has five-year terms. The draft ordinance before you has the five-year terms, so we have to have harmony between the charter and the ordinance.
So essentially?
Is the only change?
Correct, so if that's the only change.
Oh, hang on. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dennis.
I read where it says, "All appointments shall be made by the Board of Selectmen, should not be by the Town Council."
We can update now.
Yes, so any correct, we can make any corrections to these ordinances, and then what we can do is we can still approve and move the ordinance to the public hearing. So any corrections or revisions that people have, we will make, you know, make those revisions, but yet we can still approve, we can have a motion to approve this ordinance this morning, and then set a public hearing date. So the term obviously would need to be adjusted to four years, and the appointments would be made by the Town Council.
Okay, so you're saying that we could still make some changes even after we pass this ordinance, because there's a couple of things in the second paragraph on the organization that sort of, I don't understand a little bit. Way down, I almost, the last sentence, I guess, when it says, "When a member of the commission is unable to act at a particular time because of absence, sickness, disqualification by reason of personal interest, or other good reason," I would put he or she shall, and I don't like the idea, and I hope everybody will think about this, that just the chairman shall designate the alternate member to serve in place. Usually committees have a motion made, and at that particular night, the committee that have alternates, or a commission, they make a motion to seat an alternate. I, I'm a little hesitant just to say that the chairman will designate an alternate member, so I just put that out there for food for thought, and I'll await other people's opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? I mean, again, this could be a first read for us, because obviously if there's some things that people would like updated and changed, we certainly can hold off, you know, address the issues and the things that need to be corrected, and then bring it back to the next meeting, and then, because again, a public hearing, at this point, obviously, as we understand, you know, where we are with things, we do have some time, so it's not imperative that we do all this right today. But... So if everybody would like to maybe just circle back on this, table it, put it on for the next meeting, then we can discuss any, you know, any changes that people have and would like to discuss further.
That sounds pretty good. I'll make a motion to the next meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Okay, so then the Liberty Green then will be tabled to the next meeting. And then the next one, which is the Town Historian Ordinance, same situation, everybody has a copy of the ordinance codifying the position of Town Historian, and same, this one also indicates a five-year term, so we, this term limit on this one would have to be reduced to four. Under number five.
This codifies what you guys agreed to in a prior meeting, because you put a term limit on the Town Historian, it should be wrapped up in an ordinance. So this reflects the language of what you've already acted on by motion and the recommendation you had from the Historic District Commission, so in terms of the scope of the duties and the reporting mechanism back to the Town Council on the five-year term, that's a function of decisions you've made already. This just codifies it in an ordinance form.
So would we have to do anything else in order to make a correction to the previous motion that we had approved?
You only made a motion, you didn't make it anything that would be permanent and lasting beyond that meeting, so if it's the will to give this a five-year term on a consistent basis, you should pass an ordinance to that effect.
I mean, I guess the recommendation would be to correct this and make the Town Council should make an appointment for a term of four years opposed to the current five. Does anybody feel that's a big issue?
No.
Oh, not here. I have no issue.
Okay. Anybody else?
No. No.
Question, Chris, if we make it forward, do we not need the ordinance?
No, we still need the ordinance.
Okay.
You don't have the position described anywhere officially.
Say that again, Carl?
You don't have this position described anywhere officially, so this at least creates structure to have it, it lays out what the reviews are, it lays out what the qualifications are, which was the issue you had previously, and it picks up a five-year term, which is what you guys passed as a resolution, as a motion previously.
So essentially what we've been doing is changing the term limit to fall in line with what the charter indicates. Correct?
There is no charter term limit for this position.
There isn't? Okay.
This isn't described anywhere.
So we're just firming it up, we're just making a more concrete job description. So basically, our discussion right now is just between whether it's four years or five years?
Right, but we had that discussion when we first passed the resolution, is what Carl's saying, a couple of weeks ago, or whenever, and we came to the decision about five years.
Yep.
If it's not contrary to the charter, I see no reason why not, given five years.
Okay.
Unless anybody disagrees.
I mean, if you'd like to make a motion, we can, we can move forward with the ordinance as is, and then...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second?
I make a motion that we accept and enforce an ordinance codifying the position of Town Historian as presented.
Second?
I'll second. Tim?
Any other further discussion?
And send to public hearing.
And send to public hearing, correct, which, I don't know, when are we going to do that?
Oh, well.
It might make sense to try and do the two together at one public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay. So can we do a public hearing date to be determined?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to number seven, which is the Chairman's Report, which is a couple of things that I kind of want to do with dress. First and foremost, the website, there's been a lot of updates recently to the website, so if you haven't gone there recently, please do. Mary's done a great job of updating a lot of stuff on the website. Boards and commissions specifically have been updated, and some of the links that are on there now directly relate to the policy that we had put in place as it relates to boards and commissions, and replacing vacated seats. So there's applications for unaffiliated to complete, there's also a process, which we discussed as, you know, having anybody who feels they're interested in a board or commission, that they can actually submit an application for that open position, that's on there, Blue Book is on there, so please, you know, direct yourselves, take a look at that, because I believe that, you know, that's going to be very helpful on our part going forward, and please, anybody that you talk to, please remind them of this new policy, so then that way they can get acclimated to that as well.
That is fantastic. Thank you, Mary.
Great job, Mary. Great job, man.
Thank you.
She did a great job.
Thank you, Mary.
So next, due to this crisis that we are in, there's a lot of issues that a lot of the citizens and people are having, getting a lot of questions, concerns, as it relates to the budgetary process going forward, and how it's going to work. I'm kind of doing the best I can as it relates to some of the people that are having comments specifically on the All Things Clinton Facebook page, as it relates to the process, what they think we can and can't do. I just want to address this so that we all understand, and we're all on the same page as it relates to that. The budgetary process that we have to comply to this year relates to the executive order that came from the Governor's Office, that applies to all municipalities, not just Clinton. So I think people are misconstruing what's being said as it relates to the fact that they think that we're going to have the ability now to just approve our budget, and not care about what they say, and not have any input from the public. So making sure that we understand the executive order, that there is a process that's in place that we will have to follow, five items that have to be met as it relates to the public input, so that they will have some say in it. I hope all the people that are out there complaining about it, you know, actually get involved and voice their opinions as it relates to the budget process. It's important for them to still be involved, I think we all agree on that. I think we are going to have our hands full as we move forward with the budgetary process, knowing that the climate that we're in right now, but I guess we'll, you know, we'll fight that fight down the road. I would like everybody to understand that if you call you about it, ask you about it, that you direct them to that executive order, so that they can understand that we are being directed how the budgetary process works. This isn't something where the Town of Clinton, the Town Council, the Town Manager, this isn't what we're coming up with, so we're just following the guidelines that are set forth by the Governor's Office under an executive order, which means we have no authority to change it.
Okay, this is probably obvious, but is that posted on the website also?
We have posted, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
So that information is out there, we'll continue to update that as well as we go forward, so that people understand that. The second issue that they're having is that, you know, they think that we're going to, we're going to like increase spending, for whatever reason. Again, anybody that you hear from, that you speak to, there will be no additional spending for the Town of Clinton as it relates to this crisis. The only way that we could, the only way that we can any, impact any emergency spending would be that if the town declared a state of emergency, that would allow us to specifically use funds related to this emergency. We are not there, you know, so that, that's not even on the table right now. You know, what we're doing and what we're abiding by budgetarily is related to us, is related to us from the Governor's Office, so...
Chris?
Yes?
Can I make a suggestion that Carl puts out a statement answering those questions on the Town website, because there are a lot of people asking very similar questions on the board, social media, people copying me in the grocery store, all, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, so it's everything from emergency spending to the Governor's Executive Order. Most people are not going to be in that sort of order that relates to the Town.
Okay, all right.
Great for everybody. It's going to be great to hear Carl's, well, as to, you know, his view.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris?
Yes?
May I ask a question, Chris?
Yeah.
I assume that Carl may be working on, and Carl can obviously weigh in on this, what happens if our taxable factors are diminished because people will be unable to pay them? Some of our businesses in town, i.e. restaurants, are not open, you know, how are they going to pay their rent, pay their taxes? Do we have anything in place to just our spending, the potential loss of income?
I mean, I guess, I mean, maybe Carl can cross that when he gets to his report.
All right.
But I mean, again, you know, this whole world that we live in now is uncharted waters for everybody, and it's...
Oh, yeah, no, oh.
Going to affect everybody, and the thing that, you know, again, as a town, those are things that we would have to discuss on a town, is how we, you know, how we handle these situations. You know, it's just, I'm more, I'm more afraid of, you know, people having, you know, people having the feeling that they're not going to be heard, number one, and that we're going to just do what we want to do and not care about anything else. I just want to make sure that people understand, you know, like Christine says, yes, people are, you know, they have their opinions on it, you know, I've tried to kind of put some stuff out there on the Facebook post to let them know that, you know, things aren't the way they perceive them to be, but again, you know, those are things that we're going to have to address going forward, and we'll continue to have to address them, you know, as, as things pop up, you know, so my concern as a whole is that, as a council, we're all working under the same, you know, the same message that we deliver to people, you know, who are asking these questions, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Other than that, you know, I think, you know, again, you know, as a town, I think we're doing a great job, and you know, people are helping each other, people seem like they're concerned, they want to, they want to help, you know, we need to, like Mark had said, I guess, you know, we do need to find these ways where we're going to be able to help people, because it's going to affect us as a town as well, so I think everybody just needs to be patient, because we're going to do our best to help and do what we can to help everybody, but it is going to take some time, because it's new to everybody, and nobody knows, you know, kind of how to handle these things, and there's no, there's no footprint on how we're going to handle all this. So that is my report. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
Nope.
All right, then we will move on to Carl, Town Manager's Report, number eight. You there?
Okay. All right. My understanding at this point, to respond to Mark's comment, that there is a, an effort right now in the Governor's Office to look at some sort of local tax amendments or revision within an executive order, specifically, it would be to allow for deferring property tax payments for up to 90 days, if that business was financially impacted by COVID-19, and then that would have some sort of reduction or elimination of the late tax payment interest rate. It's not official yet, nor do we know what the language is. The municipal advocacy groups are trying to work with the Governor's Office on something that would make sense. Obviously, it's a local economic development opportunity to support the business community. We don't have the ability to print money like the federal government, but this does provide for some level of local relief. It's really going to get down into the weeds of how the program is going to be rolled out and administered. Preference would be that it be universal across the state, rather than necessarily each 169 municipalities figure it out, so there's something that might come on, on that front. Additionally, another executive order came out last night, well, it doesn't pertain specifically to what we're doing, it does allow for curbside pickup of alcoholic beverages. This Commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has the ability to close state park lands if utilization is high and social distancing is failing, but I think for the local concern is really more, the order requires a continuation of funding for boards of education, employees that were laid off have to return to work, so the Board of Ed is to operate as normal through to the end of its year, per the Governor's Executive Order 7R.
I'm sorry, what was that? The Board of Ed what?
The Board of Education is to continue operating and employing its employees through this, so if people were laid off, they are to be returned to work.
Okay.
So, per, per the Governor's Order, the Board of Education is supposed to operate with its staff as normal. Obviously, they're not going to be in school, and distance learning and other type of activities will be driving how the Board of Ed delivers education.
Carl? Carl, I've had folks ask whether the Town would be giving back funds now as reimbursement, and what I was trying to explain, again, perhaps another topic that could be covered and shared with the public, either through you or through the Super Ten, together, that if there are, if there's a surplus at the fiscal year of Super Ten, it has to go to the Board of Ed, and doesn't expend that, and that is not how the Board operates either. I just don't know if it's worth it, just getting the best that they have, the budget to be, or the process to be.
I didn't really get much of that, because there's an awful lot of feedback on the line right now, so there was a lot of choppiness, I couldn't really hear the full question. Repeat it?
I've had the question whether or not the Board of Ed will be giving back to residents right now. My explanation, they surplus, it will enter the fiscal year once everything bills, et cetera. I explained that the Board of Ed does have a history of running expenses, and that it's not... If...
I'm not getting any of that.
Yeah.
I think if, if everybody could use their line except for Christine, so we could eliminate some of the feedback, it would, it would help get, let her get her idea across.
I'm stuck. I'd see if it's any better. Is this any better?
Okay, I muted everyone.
Much better.
I muted everyone, except Carl and Chris and Christine.
So questions being asked of me are whether or not the Board of Education will be returning funds to the Town earlier rather than later because of not utilizing some of the resources that you would during a normal school year. I've tried to explain that if there are funds that are not expended, they will be returned to the Town at the end of the fiscal year after expenses and bills are completed. I don't know if this is a topic that could be included in a email, or, excuse me, email, in the, the post on the website related to the Governor's Executive Order, or a topic that gets picked up at later the date, but it does have implications for the perception of how this budget process will go.
Yeah, I mean, they would still follow the same process they've always followed, which would be if there's excess funds, that would be reconciled at the end of the year. The notion that they are not going to be spending their money the way they had originally planned, perhaps, is not going to, is not where the new executive order that came out at eight o'clock last night really directs, so they have to hire back people that they laid off, and have to maintain full staffing. There's also an expectation that they're going to be able to maintain their transportation contracts and pay the bus company, so Executive Order 7R would seem to start having the Board of Ed looking more like it's operating regularly, so the amount of money that they turn back is subject to debate, but the timing of any of turn back would not be till the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I think it might be useful to explain that to the, because I don't think most people are familiar with that process, because it's something that happens in the background, you know, the funds get returned at the end of the fiscal year, after, again, the bills have all been expended, and then to the, it's not, it's not as apparent as the very process that we're going through now, where everything's printed in the paper, people will see that implication.
I think the executive order that came out last night starts to take the wind out of the sails, that there was some windfall coming out of the Board of Ed. The expectation is that every Board of Education will have to maintain its employment levels.
Yes. All right, thank you.
For the rest of the report, as, as you all know from the prior email I sent you, we went through a deep cleaning of the building as a safety precaution. We utilized an emergency purchase to bring in, bring in a vendor without bidding, because of the time sensitivity and the apparent risk, in order to get the building squared away as quickly as possible. The expectation is that that would likely be an expense we could recoup through a fee of reimbursement, if that's, whenever that application process will flow forward out of the Fed. River Cog, they're going through the same process we all are, of trying to figure out how to have public meetings, public hearings, and get public input in a day of social distancing, so the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and Regional Conservation, Plan of Conservation Development are all working through how they're going to get the public to be involved and receive public comment on the process for both of those plans. As I noted in writing, we do have a quote from our prior vendor, if needed, to assist in the fee of reimbursement process. Right now, that quote is, is it about $10,000? If it's needed, it's something we can, can take a look at at that point in time. I did give you, as an attachment to the report, an overview of some of the stimulus monies that have come out of the federal government. The dollars that are aimed to localities are all going to flow through the federal government, or through the state government, they're not going to be directs to towns, so we'll have to be keeping an eye on how the state of Connecticut plans on distributing those dollars. There is a paid leave program that goes into effect today, for a paid leave for individuals who are impacted by COVID-19. That is not paid leave, that goes, that is reimbursed as it stands today. If a private sector employer has to follow through, there's a tax credit that they get, which is an offsetting As it stands today, if a private sector employer has to follow through, there's a tax credit that they get, which is an offsetting, uh, expense. The public sector does not get the benefit of the tax credit and there is no offsetting expense. Um, there are discussions in DC right now as to whether or not municipalities will be able to get, um, some sort of reimbursement, uh, through a different program at another point in time, uh, rather than having to shoulder that expense singularly through this effort. But as it stands now, that's a public sector expense that is expected to be paid without reimbursement. Um, so that's kind of where we stand now, not knowing what else is going to come out, uh, by way of governor executive order. Pattern seems to be they come out at night. Um, so we, we learn it, uh, depending on when it comes out. Whatever happens with the, a tax relief program, obviously we'll be monitoring, uh, to see what comes forward. And for public hearings, particularly a, a public hearing before the budget and now for ordinances, we are looking at other electronic platforms other than Zoom. This platform allows for 100 people to participate. And while that might fit the normal box of how we've done business, we're looking at a platform that allows for greater than that, a level of participation. On the off chance that you do get more people participating because more people are at home, having the time on their hands to participate in local government. So we're looking at, uh, licensing and platforms that allow for more than 100. I don't want to do what New Haven had to do during its public, uh, budget process. They were telling people to get off the line so that they could stay in that 100, um, participant threshold. So we're looking at something that would mirror a virtual, uh, auditorium, uh, to have, have a higher level of participation. If we don't have that level of participation, I think it was probably, it would be a good, good effort to expend the dollars on a higher level of participation on the chance that we get it rather than trying to assume we don't get it. And that's the extent of what I've got, uh, today. At the next meeting, we'll have some, uh, budget transfers, uh, to take place, including the one that will finance the, uh, repair or the, the cleaning up the town hall.
Thank you, Carl.
Carl, can I, may I make a comment, Chris?
Yeah.
Carl, I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate all your time and energy and effort that has had to go into all of this. You've been superhuman and, um, just so forward-thinking in everything that's been going on. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and I'm sure we all appreciate it. You came on at a very difficult time and you have handled it like a champion and, uh, I am very, very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Here, here. I, you stole my words, Carol. Uh, I'd also like to extend it to our chairman.
Yeah.
I want to thank both of them, uh, for their leadership during this time. I think the community really appreciates these updates that they're getting and the straight back. And again, I concur with Carol. Thank you, Mr. Kilduff. Thank you, Chris, for being our leaders at this time.
Absolutely.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Likewise.
All right. Does anybody, I'm, one, one thing that I missed on the chairman's report is that also on, on these, um, positive tests that if somebody should test positive, please understand if people are asking, we get that direction from the local health district. They would contact the town should somebody test positive in Clinton. That doesn't necessarily mean that everybody that tested positive were notified of. It is the individual who basically gives the right for the health district to release any information. So I just want people to understand that, that, you know, because sometimes there's been some talk about how, you know, we only heard about one or two and now people see the, the, the paper and there's up to five or six. You know, we're not withholding any information. We're providing and passing through the information that were provided by the health district as it relates to positive tests.
Beautiful.
All right. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you again, everyone, for, uh, for joining the meeting today. And at this point, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Again, thank you all. Please stay healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.